Okay, welcome. I'd like to call this October 13, 2020 council meeting in order. If you please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
The Tuna Flag of the United States of America. The Tuna Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, please call the roll.
Heffinger.
Here.
Lamb.
Here.
Rose.
Here.
Shields.
Here.
Simpson.
Here.
Coyne.
Here.
Hazelton.
Present.
Reading of the minutes?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
I move that the minutes of the regular meeting of September 28, 2020, is prepared and submitted by the clerk be approved.
Second.
Discussion on the minutes. Will the clerk please call the roll on the approval of the minutes?
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hazelton.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Motion passed at 7-0.
Reports of standing committees. The Finance Committee met prior to council this evening and will get to meet two more weeks from now before council at that time. Health, Safety, and Sanitation, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no meeting scheduled at this time and nothing to report.
Thank you. Public Properties, Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Mr. President. Likewise, no meeting scheduled and nothing to report this evening.
Special Legislation, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing to report. I am going to schedule a meeting the week after next whenever I am and Councilmen Heffinger and Rose are available so we can revisit the feeding wild animals and the issue of the process for demolition.
Thank you. Streets and sidewalks, Mr. Heffinger.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no meeting scheduled at this time and nothing to report.
Thank you. Water and Utilities, Mrs. Hazelton.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled at this time and nothing new to report.
Thank you. Emerging Technologies, Mr. Rose.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing to report and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Requests for council action, we have several. For Finance, we have 2192 budget amendments. 2193 Accept Justice Reinvestment Incentive Grant, J R I G. 2194 Expenditure Over $15,000 Chipper while Roofing for the Service Department. 2195 Resolution Accepting Amounts and Rates Determined by the Budget Commission. 2196 Repay Advances. 2197 Discussion and Update on Capital Bill Requests Fiscal Year '21 and '22. 2198 Authorized Lease of Flex Portable Building for the Municipal Court. Reports of Municipal Officers, Mayor Hamwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, on the lines of the COVID-19, Medina County was moved up to Level Orange just yesterday. And the Health Commissioner is predicting if our number of increases continue at the pace they are, we could be back in Red either next week or the third week. So, we're asking everybody to remain vigilant in avoiding large gatherings, wearing masks in public, washing hands frequently, and social distancing. Updated information on business openings, safety protocols, et cetera, on the city website and the Medina County Health Department website. And we'd also like to remind people to continue to support our local businesses. The new parking deck is open and available to the public on the south side of City Hall. Everybody's welcome to use it. Early voting began earlier this month at the Medina County Board of Elections. I'd like to encourage all to vote. The original farmer's market opened its 15th season on Medina Square on June 6th. And this coming Saturday, October 17th, will be the final market for the season. I'd like to thank all who've attended thus far and supported the vendors as well as the local businesses. The State of the City was presented to the Medina City Council and the Medina Area Chamber of Commerce. There are links for both on the city website, which is www.madinaoh.org. A press conference was held on October 9th here at City Hall with Commissioner, Medina County Commissioner Bill Hudson and I on the combined courthouse projects. There is a link to that press conference at the city website, www.madinaoh as well. And what was addressed was this fact sheet. And if people are interested in this, rather than watch the press conference, we have copies of this available. They're posted on the doors, but we can make copies for anybody that wants one. Or if you contact Kathy Patton at the council office, Kpatton@madinaoh.org, or Sheri at my office, Scrow, C-R-O-W, at madinaoh.org. They'd be happy to scan it and send it to an email address for your benefit. Halloween Trick or Treat will be held this year on October 31st from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. We are encouraging those taking part to wear masks, to social distance with the other folks going door-to-door, and all the other precautions for COVID. Some of the residents may choose to have their lights out, meaning they don't want to participate, and we'd ask those taking part to just respect that. They may be elderly, they may be immune compromised, or both. Fiber to the Home. We're asking residents that are interested in taking part in the Fiber to the Home, the more surveys we can get taken, the more chances we are having it continue to move forward from Guilford Township through Montville Township and into Medina City. And that survey's available at www.madina.litcommunities.net. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mrs. Latuska, did I say that correctly? Municipal Court, do you have anything to add?
At this time, no. The only thing that I want to bring to the city councils is our flexible portable building that we're trying to get passed so we can get that delivered to it.
Thank you. Mrs. Philbin, Law Department?
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, the Law Department has no report. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Durham, Finance Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a lot going on with the CARES funds, as we talked about at Finance, and we've done a software upgrade in our office, and we're working through that.
Thank you. Chief Kenny, Police Department?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to remind the community to lock their car doors and take their keys out of their cars. We've had a rash of car break-ins and, on occasion, actual car thefts from people who have left their key fobs in their vehicles. These individuals will steal the car if those keys are left inside. We have increased patrols in the neighborhoods to combat these types of crimes, but I'd just like to remind the community to lock your car doors and make sure you keep your keys and key fobs in the house with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patton, City Engineer.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Mr. Pacoli, Service Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to remind folks that the annual city auction is this upcoming Saturday, September -- or I'm sorry, October 17th, at the City Garage, 781 West Smith Road. The list of items to be auctioned is on the city website. The auction starts promptly at 10:00, and preview will be at 9:00 a.m. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frye, Medina Cable TV.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to let the residents know they can tune into Medina TV for our candidates' forums to get educated on, before they head to the ballot box, on the issues and candidates' running. They can also be seen at our Facebook page and on YouTube. So, take advantage of that before you head to the polls. Thank you.
Thank you. Confirmation of Mayor's Appointment, we have one for the Rec Center Advisory Board. Suzanne Swain, City Representative, Term Expiring 12, 31, 22.
Move to confirm the Mayor's Appointment?
Second.
Discussion on the Mayor's Appointment? Will the clerk please call the roll on the Mayor's Appointment?
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion passed at 7-0.
Notice this Communication and Petitions. We have one for a liquor permit not to object to the issuance of a new D2, D3 permit to IBC Bars LLC doing business as diner 42, first floor and deck, 665 Lafayette Road, Medina.
Move not to object?
Second, not to object?
Discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Motion passed at 7-0.
Unfinished business, we have none. Introduction of Visitors. Members of the public, we have been given the opportunity to speak on any issue concerning which pertains to the city during a portion of the council agenda devoted to introduction of visitors. All comments shall be directed to the Chair and a reasonable time limit of approximately five minutes will be imposed. If there's a group, please appoint a spokesperson. Members of the public, we afford the opportunity to comment on other portions of the meetings determined by the Chair or by a vote of the majority of council members present. Is there anybody that wishes to address council at this time? Yes, sir?
Good evening. I'm Nathan Case of 513 East Washington. Good evening, Medina City Council and citizens. I've come to clear the air. It seems as though there are too many outlets pushing contrived stories. There's already enough smoke and mirrors. I'm here to clear the air. It seems as though the public thinks the courthouse project will cost $60 million. It seems as though Medina City citizens believe that they're voting to cancel the building of a new courthouse. It seems as though our local residents are being told to vote no along party lines. It seems as though the public is lacking the facts because the local committee -- because a local committee has been pushing a false narrative. It seems as though it's time to clear the air and tell you the truth about the matter. First and foremost, no matter how you vote on Issue 7, the county will spend $30 million. And that $30 million will be allocated in a number of ways. It will be raised by property tax, sales tax, budget rollovers from soon-to-be terminating loans, and the difference in new loans. Yes, loans do have interest, but at this current moment in history, interest rates are at an extraordinary -- extraordinarily low. Of any time in history, now is the time to take advantage of low history -- of low interest rates for a county project. How many people do you know that have recently refinanced their homes? To my second point, voting yes or no will not stop the building of a courthouse. Voting yes will exclude the city from sharing a courthouse with the county. The county will still build a courthouse. It will just be four stories instead of five. The decision could force the city to build a new courthouse further from the center of town and at a greater expense. The new building will cost more as it will need its own foundation, its own elevators, its own heating system, its own restrooms, and its own waiting areas. Not only will it need all of these tangible items, but it will also need to pay 100% of its utilities, its security, its custodial service, and 100% of the building upkeep. Voting no will enable the city to share the building with the county. The city and the county can share the costs of the building and maintenance. This one building will also be able to share elevators, heating systems, and upkeep costs throughout the years. With that being stated, if you vote no, Medina City and Medina County will save money. As I mentioned before, the county is going to spend $30 million regardless of how you vote on Issue 7. If you vote no, the city can share this new courthouse. But there's a catch. The city has been planning for a courthouse for decades. The city is a picture of good conservative fiscal management structure. The Municipal Court has saved approximately $4.3 million over the last 20 years. This money can be -- only be used for a courthouse or court expenditures. The capital projects fund will be used for $1.8 million. The remainder will be raised by special court project fees. No money will be borrowed from the city, and the city's share will be $8 million. And finally, this is a bipartisan issue. This is neither left nor right. This is one of the few times that both sides can agree that saving money and working together is the right thing. Within these walls, our city council has drastically different views. I could be so bold to say that there are many members of this council that are on the extreme left, the extreme right, and a few moderates in there as well, but they're all in agreement on this issue. Do not make this a party-line issue. This is a common sense issue. Don't vote on Issue 7 because your party's backing it, but think for yourself and your city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to address council at this time?
Thank you, Council President Coyne. Members of council, Mr. Mayor. My name is Mark Williams. I've been a resident of the city for all of my life, excepting the five years I spent at Ohio State. That's the plan at Ohio State, is five years. After doing some research into the proposed courthouse expansion project, I've come to ask you, our city council, one question. Before I go into the question, I want to give you some background. In my research, I found that there's a group opposed to the courthouse project, to the expansion project, and they call themselves collectively Save Our Courthouse. However, my research also showed the current provided plan that's been provided to the public by both the county and the city does not alter significantly any of our courthouses, doesn't remove those courthouses. So, I'm not sure what we're saving. Upon further research, I was told by a member of the SOS group that the project is a nefarious creation of a specific partisan group. However, I've heard and read, and in fact, Mr. Case just reinforced, that this effort, as far as the city's concerned, is a bipartisan and unanimous effort between our city council and our administration, and I applaud you guys for that. So, my question is this. Am I missing something? Is there some sinister purpose in this project that I'm missing?
No.
Thank you. That's the answer to the question I wanted. Then I would urge all Medina residents to vote no on Issue 7. Issue 7, if it passes, if it gets the yes vote, will cost the city money, and we have a council that is supporting a no on Issue 7 because it's the fiscally responsible thing to do for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. I'd like to follow up on that a little bit also, is that you raise a good point that, you know, what are we supposed to do as elected officials, both at the city level and at the county level? I think we were put here to look at the issues that are presented to us and to come up with a answer that benefits the entire community. Now, this community makes up the city of Medina and the remaining areas of the Medina County. So, this is really both a city issue with the Municipal Court, but the Municipal Court, we must remember, covers three-quarters of the county. I think some people may be under the impression that the Municipal Court only covers the city of Medina, but that's false. The Municipal Court covers, I think, all the townships north of Wadsworth Township, Guilford, and the bottom four townships of our county. And as an elected official, we've been through, looking at the courthouse project for many years, as you mentioned. It's been two decades. We've been trying to determine how do we best put a court project forward for the city of Medina Municipal Court project. And given this opportunity, we've come to the conclusion that it's better to work together. I think that the citizens of the county elected us to figure ways to save money, and this is one of the ways that we came up with, is by working together through a collaborative effort with the county because we can build a building that is shared, both from the Municipal Court level and the county courts. And this is a great advantage, as was mentioned, because of the sharing of utilities, the sharing of the entrances and the security protocol that results from these entrances, sharing of the common hallways, the restrooms. This is all a benefit to the community, and I think that we are put here by the community to come up with ideas that benefit the community and save the community money, and I think everybody on council has been through this process long enough, and this is a great opportunity to do that. Now, of course, there's an issue on the ballot that says that we want to save our courthouse, as you mentioned, and it must be made clear that throughout this process that we started many months ago, we've come to the conclusion that none of the buildings on the east side of the square will be touched as far as being demolished. They will all remain as currently existing. The new court facility will be built behind the existing court facility, which is an even better opportunity because that frees up the 69 building, which is the center building with the nice white pillars on it, to be used for some other purpose. And that building will be saved, and I think that there's been some miscommunication regarding what's going to happen with that, and it's got to be made very clear that nothing's going to be demolished. And the whole goal that we're excited about is the saving of money. The city is finally have a project that is financially doable for the city of $8 million as far as the construction costs are concerned, and we're very excited about that because we've been through this process so many times and saw so many different numbers ranging up to $10.5 million, which just didn't seem feasible. So, we appreciate your comments, both you and Nathan's comments, because I think we're heading in the right direction, and we hope the public understands the facts of the situation, and if they have any questions, just ask before you vote to make sure you understand what you're voting for because, you know, we all believe that this is a great project and a collaborative effort that saves people money, and I think that's what we're here to do, is do the fiscally responsible thing and save people money and do a building that's collaborative with as many jurisdictions as possible, and in this case, it's with the county. So, we appreciate the comments that you both had, and hopefully, we can get this thing across the finish line because it's going to be a great asset to the county and to the city. So, thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to address council at this time? Okay, introduction? Oh, yes. Sure, go ahead.
This is a story that needs a disclosure, and this is not a story for political gain. This is a story that found an audience at the same time I was willing to tell it. It's a sad truth, and it's a story that needs an audience. It should be told to the masses, but up until now, there was not an audience to hear it. Last year, a good friend's daughter was raped by two juvenile assailants. The details of this occurrence were disgusting and obviously immoral. In this case, justice had to be delayed because of the court's overwhelming schedule. I believe the delay was three months. In those three months, the victim had to attend school with the two assailants. The victim had to attend school whilst being discredited by her peers. Justice should be swift, and the ruling should ease the minds of the victims. In this case, the court's delay wounded a child's spirit that was already broken. Finally, three months later, the case was heard. My wife, a friend of the family, and I went to the courthouse in support of our friends. The hearing was at the old courthouse. The building has narrow halls with benches on one side. These narrow halls are the waiting rooms for the juvenile court. In such a case with torturous animosity and vivid contention, we were forced to sit alongside the assailants and their family. In order to ensure the peace, a court guard was appointed to the victim's family. The court guard was also enlisted to escort them from the court to the parking garage. In our hall room, waiting room, and counter, we were forced to witness the assailant's family jeering and smiling in threat. My blood was boiling, as I'm sure was the case for the rest of our assemblage. How could this be fair? How could a court put a child in this position? And how could this be common practice? This is our story, but I'm curious how many other victims have had the same experience? How can this be rectified for future victims? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Introduction and Consideration of Ordinances and Resolutions. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to suspend the rules requiring three readings on the following ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance 172-20, ordinance 173-20, ordinance 174-20, ordinance 175-20, ordinance 176-20, ordinance 177-20, and 178-20.
I will make a motion to suspend the rules considering three readings for the tonight's ordinances and resolutions.
Second.
Discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Motion passed at 7-0.
Ordinance 172-20, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Medina, Ohio, certifying that when a municipal obligation was incurred, sums were lawfully appropriated into funds to satisfy the obligation, and sufficient sums currently exist to satisfy this obligation.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I move to add at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Discussion on the emergency clause and ordinance, Mr. Durham.
Thank you, Mr. President. Do you want to address this?
This is basically old invoices from Ohio alcohol monitoring that we have from 2019 that we just want to clean up and get the vendor paid off.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the emergency clause?
Hazelton?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Motion passed at 7-0.
Ordinance? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Coyne?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Ordinance 172-20, pass at 7-0.
Ordinance 173-20, an ordinance authorizing an increase of expenditure to Walter Haverfield LLP to $45,000 for the Law Department.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Philbin?
Mr. President, I just wanted to mention that this increase is from $15,000 to $45,000, and it covers, we have at least two invoices from Walter Haverfield for services they've already rendered to us. So, we've got two invoices, but also, we anticipate to use them for the remainder of this year, and so there's some projection there that that's why there's an increase in that it's not just for services that have already happened. So, that's why it's to the $45,000. And I do also want to mention that this, the ordinance that was typed up, there is a typo there. It lists 15 to 45 in the top, but in Section 1, it shows 15 to 40. So, I just wanted to clarify that it was to the $45,000 amount.
Correct. That typo will be corrected in the final ordinance.
Thank you.
Any further discussion or comment? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Ordinance 173-20, pass at 7-0.
Ordinance 174-20, an ordinance authorizing expenditure to Hall Public Safety Upfitters to outfit two new Ford police cruisers for the Police Department.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Chief Kenny?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the outfit for the two vehicles previously approved.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Trying to make that correction. Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Ordinance 174-20, pass at 7-0.
Ordinance 175-20, an ordinance amending Sections 3102 and 3105, the Salaries and Benefits Code, the City of Medina, Ohio, relative to the Municipal Court Probation Grant Positions.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I move to add at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Discussion on the ordinance and emergency clause.
This is a, our two probation officers are paid through the J-Rig.
This is a, our two probation officers are paid through the J-Rig. It runs from July, or I'm sorry, June 30th to July 1st, 19 to 21. We're just going to repay them, increase their salaries through the grant.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the emergency clause?
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hazelton.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hazelton.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Ordinance 175-20 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 176-20, an ordinance amending ordinance number 187-19, passed November 25, 2019, amendments to the 2020 budget.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Durham.
Thank you, Mr. President. There's a number of amendments to the budget here. There's a pass-through, and then a whole bunch of grant items, and then some repayment of advances.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hazelton.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Ordinance 177-20 passes 7-0.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Durham.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the advances that we talked about in the last ordinance on the appropriations. We're repaying advances, and advances, for people who don't know, are borrowing money from one fund to another.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hazelton.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hazelton.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Ordinance 175-20 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 176-20, an ordinance amending ordinance number 187-19, passed November 25, 2019, amendments to the 2020 budget.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Durham.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the advances that we talked about in the last ordinance on the appropriations. We're repaying advances, and advances, for people who don't know, are borrowing money from one fund to another.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance.
Coyne.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hazelton.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hazelton.
Yes.
I'm sorry, motion passes 7-0.
Clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance.
Hazelton.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hazelton.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hazelton.
Yes.
I'm sorry, motion passes 7-0.
Clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance.
Hazelton.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Ordinance 178-20 passes, subject to the law director's final approval.
Thank you. Counsel comments.
Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like to thank Mr. Williams and Mr. Case for bringing up some of the facts about the issue seven that's on the ballot. I do think it's very important that all our city residents, and again, that's just the city residents that's voting on this, not the county residents. It is so important that the voters become educated about the issue because the ramifications are very high. The second thing I shared with Mr. Williams and Mr. Coyne, that my wife and I went and voted today, the early voting, which the mayor said started last week, and there was a large line, and I was kind of hesitant when we pulled up there because I knew we had these meetings tonight, and I had an earlier meeting this afternoon. I didn't want to be waiting in line forever, and my wife says, "Come on, it's a nice day. It's going to get cold the next couple of days." So anyhow, we got out. I got to tell you, hats off to the election board. Everyone, the employees, there was employees outside that, when we were walking in the lines, in the line was long. They said, "Your wait now is going to be," this guy going to Cedar Point, "your wait's going to be approximately 25 to 30 minutes." And in 25 minutes, we were inside voting, and everything went so smooth. Again, hats off to the election board. Everybody was so nice and accommodating inside, thankful that we were voting. There is, for people that are handicapped, there's people waiting outside that you can drive up, give them your driver's license, they'll scan your license and give you a ballot, and you can pull off to the side and fill out your ballot and pull right back up, and they'll take your ballot and submit it for you. So if you have an opportunity to vote early, do so. It's, you know, don't let the line look intimidating to you because it went really smoothly. Other than that, I would just encourage people to vote, whether you're going to do it by mail or in person. And again, with this pandemic that's going on and the political atmosphere right now, just remember to be kind to one another. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Hazelton?
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I would also like to thank Mr. Williams and Mr. Case for coming and speaking today and clarifying some of the facts surrounding ballot issue seven. I also want to expand on the story that Mr. Case told, and let everyone know that that is not an uncommon situation in our current courthouse. A lot of times, I have been there with people from the recovery center, when I ran the recovery center, that have had unfortunate things happen to them, and they are subject to sit directly next to the person. The victim is right there with the person that instigated the incident. I think Mr. Case's point was that with our new courthouse, that will not happen. Right now, when you walk in those stairwells, your judge could very well be walking next to an accused person. The rooms for privacy, when an attorney wants to consult, like if you've ever been in the domestic relations court, which I have many times, you cannot consult with your attorney anywhere private, and you have to sit right across from the person that you're trying to divorce. So the lack of space in our current courthouse, that situation will be remedied if we are able to complete this project. So if you're going to the Muni Court or anywhere else, you're assured that privacy, and that's very important, especially in incidents like Mr. Case spoke about. I would also like to continue on issue seven. I am a woman who has been proven wrong many times, like many of us, but I have learned that the more you educate yourself before you open your mouth about an issue, the better off you are. And in this situation, I would ask that all voters educate themselves about issue seven. The wording is very, very confusing. However, you have entrusted us with the honor of being your public servants, and we have evaluated the language, we have put the facts together as they are and presented that to you in the hopes that you will interpret that and make a decision that is good for us and good for the city. I would also like to say, like Councilman Simpson said, please vote, 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 especially if you are a female. We worked really, really hard to get here. You are doing a disservice not only to yourself, but to females in general if you do not exercise your right to vote. So please, use your voice. If you don't like something, this is your opportunity to change it. If you like how things are going, this is your opportunity to keep it that way. Do not let your voice be silenced. Please use your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to make a clarification also. You notice in front of us, we have three poster boards with some renderings on them. This is what the courthouse design will look like. The project as currently envisioned will look like these three drawings. As you can see, it looks very familiar because it looks exactly like, because it is exactly like, the current east side of the square. So if there's any questions, these pictures represent the vision of the combined courthouse. And as you can tell, the vision is exactly what we want to see. Mr. Lamb.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. Mark, Nathan, thank you for your comments. It's really important to clarify this issue. Listen, when you think about what we have accomplished, the community should look at this project, they should look at this moment of this project is probably our proudest moment. If you look at what went into putting this project together, it is realistically, not often, but it is realistically how we would all hope our governments would work. We had hard discussions, we had fruitful discussions, we had goals, they didn't always match up, but as time went on, the goal itself, about combining these two courts, bringing more people down to the square, dealing with issues, as Mr. Case brought up, about the difficulties of the mix of who is sitting by who in a too small, inappropriate courtroom, saving money both for the county and for the city, and saving the historic district. All of those things were worked out. No demolition, no disruption of local business. All those things were hammered out over a period of time. It is how government works best. What more could you ask for? And generally, we believe yes means yes, and that's good. No means no, okay? Maybe that's not good, but maybe this is just the season of trick-or-treat, but in this case, yes means not good. No means better. No means the realization of this project that has been incubating for so long, that so many people, our colleagues at the county, the mayor, the administration, city council members, all worked to put these pieces together, everybody with different constituencies and maybe different agendas, personal agendas, or where you're located in your office agenda. But all of it has been worked out. And as the president council pointed out, if you look at the drawings that we have from